All right, well, good evening and welcome to the March School Board session. Today is a work session. Today is Thursday, March 2nd, 2023. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we just have three items on our agenda for this workshop, beginning with our staff spotlight. So, Mr. Hudson, I'll let you introduce our staff.
Yeah, thank you. So, as part of our continued opportunities to demonstrate the great work that our staff is doing, we're going to emphasize and highlight our cultural liaison position this evening. And Eliana was so gracious to be here with us tonight, and she joined us the end of last summer to do the cultural liaison position. And she has got a wealth of experiences and knowledges that she brings to Wasika and to our district and to our students. So, we're very grateful to have her here. Let her share a little bit about what she does and how that job looks, and then, of course, answer any questions that you may have. So, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Eric. So, my name is Eliana Rubacava. As you know, I am the cultural, I hold the position for the cultural liaison. And essentially, what my job entails is I interpret for families, for Spanish-speaking families, and for students. So, we've got parents and students. I have been translating anything, any communication that comes out from the schools, from the district, to the families, making sure that it is in the language that they speak and understand. And I also have been translating curriculums, things for students that come in who have no English and they're in our classrooms. And so, I work with teachers to translate some of that lessons, lesson plans. Some of the interpretations that I've been doing have been conferences, so I'm there in conferences. I am also part of the IEP meetings as well. And I also help, and Hartley, right now, I am with the kindergarteners. There is a few students that do not speak English, and I also help them translate things while in the classroom. And so, usually, my day, it's really, things happen. You know, I get a call from a teacher, or I get a call from a parent that want to speak with someone in the office, in one of the schools. And so, I make sure that I'm available and I'm present with whoever needs me. And I've been a lot also working with teachers, kind of figuring out how to advocate our migrant students, for our migrant students. And so, that's actually been one of the important, I guess, one of the pieces that I really enjoy of this work, is I get to interact with our migrant families that come to Wasika. And we get to understand where they're coming from, why they're here, kind of like the struggles that they have changing schools, making sure that we are able to give them the credits that they need to graduate when they go back to Texas, for example. And so, my main job is also to educate, to guide our families, because so much of the, what entails in our education system, it's so complex for our families. And so, that is also what I'm working, to make sure that they understand how our system works, and they are more engaged in the academic progress of their kids. Yeah.
Right. Yeah. And connections to the community with resources and things like that as well?
Yes.
But yeah, just kind of talk about being available. So, she's usually my first email or call when I have a weather message to go out, to say, can we communicate this with families that don't have students standing on the corner waiting for a bus that isn't going to come?
Yes.
With that piece too. And her availability and accessibility has been nothing short of impressive. I should appreciate it. Someone else can be awake with me at that time of the day. But no, it's a service that our students and our staff both benefit from, this position. It really does provide a connection for our families. And what I appreciate about Eliana and her work is that it's not, it's not sort of looking for, it's not replacing the teacher relationship with students or the families, but it's only encouraging and cementing that closer by helping that communication piece work through. So, questions you have for her?
How many families do you work with throughout the district?
Um, gosh, it's probably around 50. And it goes, it's 50 when our migrants' families come for the season, and then I work with maybe like 20 for the whole year.
Does that spread you pretty thin, then, I would assume?
I mean, I wish I could be everywhere, whenever they need me. I wish I can just be so many of me, you know, versus, but, but I mean, it's manageable. So far, I've been able to manage it. I've been building a rapport with the family, which helps a lot. And I do want to mention that, you know, my focus as well with the district is to reduce some of that cultural barriers that we have with Latino community in Wasika.
Yeah.
So, it's one of our goals.
Do you interact with all three schools, or?
Yes, yes. Hartley, Wes, the high school, junior high, and a few for the ALC. Yes.
How many students? So, I know you said you work with both the families and the students. How many students do we have in our district that don't speak English?
That don't speak it?
Yeah. So, it sounds like you've got a couple kindergartners.
I would say like around five.
Okay.
And then, we have students who are bilingual, and so, they don't like really speak English too well, but they also don't speak the Spanish so well. So, like, they're bilingual and they're still learning both languages.
Okay. That's really, that's really interesting. I just want to comment on that, on that. That's to be kind of not proficient in either language. I can't imagine the challenges of that. So, yeah.
If you have a student that may come that doesn't speak English, are those also, do we, obviously, want to try to translate so they can still get as much of the, do we try to, do we do the English as a second language, or do some ESL things for that?
Yes.
How does that usually happen? Does that usually take a while before you're doing less with that, or?
We, I mean, we put them in the ESL programs right away. That's like, they probably have the two classes, two periods where they have that. I know Hartley does pull out, so they pull, you know, they pull out the kids, probably two times a day, every day, and they work with those kids. Some of our kids that come, again, they don't speak English at all. It's mainly at the high school that I do this. I give them a tour. So, I give them a tour of the building. I, you know, go over how the schedule works and that we have periods. And also, so, it's a nice way to kind of create like a welcoming space as well. I think it's very important for, you know, our students to know that there's someone that can relate and understand where they're coming from. And so, I'm really happy. I'm really happy to be in this position and be able to offer that. Yeah.
And do you do that before they are like thrown into their first day? So, they're familiar with, you know, their teachers and where they're going? And, because I would assume that would be quite intimidating to walk in there. Yeah.
Overwhelming, nervous. Every time I ask them, Art, do you feel nervous? Yes, I'm very nervous. And it's also comforting to know there's other, they have other Spanish-speaking students around them. And so, we try to connect them with other students as well.
I suppose, and then, if you're at another school and they need help, they maybe have another resource to?
Yes. Our Spanish-speaking students, they're horrible bilingual. Yes.
Well, it doesn't sound like you have a free time during your day. So, I appreciate that you gave up part of your evening to come and talk to us about this really important position. And I'm thrilled that you were able to join us this year. And yeah, you're making a big impact.
Yeah, of course. No, it's an honor to be here. It's an honor to be part of this. And I'm just looking forward to what we can bring into the table and to help out and connect more with our community.
Yeah. And Eliana, what was your last name again?
Uh, Rubacava.
Okay.
So, how do, we have students that are learning the Spanish language. Do you interact with them at all in the Spanish, in the Spanish classes? Are you interacting there at all? Or is that far beyond what you're capable of doing?
Well, I haven't interacted with them, not with the Spanish-speaking, who are taking Spanish classes. Is that what you mean?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, no, I haven't.
Okay. Yeah, I think her day is full.
Well, it sounds that way. It sounds that way. But it would be, it would be interesting for students that, right, where Spanish is their second language, to be able to visit with a person that, right, where Spanish is their first language, you know?
So, Charlie, I know that some students that are, where Spanish is their first language, they have come into the classes, because my son is in Spanish right now, and he has a friend that's come in and kind of challenged the kids who are learning the language. And so, that does happen. So, they use the students that are at school.
I think that's kids learning from, kids learning from kids.
Yeah. Yep. Yes.
Very good. Thanks so much.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. And, Mr. Hudson, thanks for suggesting having Eliana come in. I really, I appreciate that. And also, later on, we have the legislative update, but there's a lot of talk at the legislature about funding for ELL programs. And just what she's talking about right here, I think, illustrates how important those programs are, not just for our district, but all over the state. So, yeah.
Yeah, very good.
So, all right. So, our next topic of discussion is facilities. So, we have some facility updates to?
Yeah. And so, this evening, what we'd like to share with you is just a brief update of some of the work the Facility Committee has done the last few months. One of the things that we've been working hard on for the last several years is identifying some of the physical limitations, particularly at our elementary schools, some of the repairs that are coming to a head here, and some things we have to think about for our future facility needs. And one of the things that we had not spent as much of time thinking about is the teaching and learning aspect and the student experience of our elementary schools, and what would we like our buildings to eventually look like in some way, shape, or form, knowing that it's going to be customizable and personalized to what our district needs. But some of the things we were talking about was there's a little bit of, we don't know what we don't know. And so, in terms of going out and seeing some different buildings, and so, the Facility Committee, those who were able to attend, everybody had some different schedules and things going on. So, it was those who were able to attend, went and visited four buildings on February 8th. We took some pictures. We took away some themes. We talked to the principals and some of the teachers about the designs. And we took away some themes that we feel pretty comfortably are important to the teaching and learning experience of kids. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to model any of these particular examples as to what we choose to do. But whether it's a remodel, an addition, a not do anything but just continue to work on repairs, whatever it is that we choose to work on, these are some themes we want to keep in mind going forward, so that if we have the opportunity to make a change that could impact student experience, that we take advantage of that in whatever shape it is. So, tonight, we talked through, as a Facility Committee, right before this meeting, we went through this discussion as well, and we kind of came to the conclusion that, yep, these are some ideas we think are important to a student experience. We obviously have the budgetary constraints and things we're talking about right now, community impact, things like that. So, locked away from tonight's meeting, really saying, let's see if we can't narrow down our design a little bit more on our potential ideas, incorporating some of these things, so that in the next several months, we can have a conversation about whether or not we move forward or whether or not we don't, at this particular time, whatever that strategy is. So, I want to share that with all of you as well. So, you have that aspect, or that vision. As I understand it, Chuck, is this presentation will be embedded in the presentation later. So, those watching at home won't see it now, but they'll see it later on.
They'll see it small portion.
Okay, very good. Okay. Well, we'll get a chance for everyone to see that when the time comes. So, you can go to the first slide there. So, we first visited Lakeville, an elementary school, a K-5 building with just under 800 students. Now, you can go to the next slide. One of the themes we're seeing in a lot of our buildings is the concept of neighborhoods, or pods, or some sort of grade-level area. So, when you think about, you see the number four on that left side there, this was the fourth-grade neighborhood. So, wide-open, flexible space, kind of taking the place of a hallway. You see the booths there along the line, so we don't have those in classrooms, but they still have student space, student storage space in the classrooms, not in this flexible space, was a theme. So, basically, your entry point to this long hall was the end with a double-door system that was your secure point at that point. Then, the fourth-grade classrooms all surrounded this particular, this particular hallway. Just an example of how the media center was designed in this particular building as a center hub of the building, we saw that as a theme in all of our site visits as well. The media center was very close to the beginning, to the front of the building, or somewhere in the front of the building. Two stories was a theme with these four buildings as well. Minimizing footprint was likely the rationale behind that, to be able to build up versus take up more land, that option. Okay. Then, we went to Maplewood, and we saw an elementary school that just opened this fall, Justice Allen Page Elementary School in Maplewood there. And some things to think about here that I thought was interesting is that a very well-designed, you can kind of see in the bottom left there, cafeteria really wasn't any larger than any of our buildings, that are particularly Wes and the junior, senior high, larger than Hartley's. But it was designed for serving very strategically. So, able to move 800 kids through that lunch area very effectively. Never felt like there's 800 kids in that building at any given time. Double-using space, they had the stage right there in the gym by a fold-down area. They didn't use the cafeteria for that, but it was their auditorium as well. One of the things that's just a decision based on security and price point was this building happened to have those floor-to-ceiling window, door areas there of glass, which we talked about as a Facility Committee, the things that would be something that we have to consider if that's where we want to go with or not. Different opinions on that based on different perspectives. And then, you just see the modern hand-washing stations that they had there, that are just much more upgraded than some of the current things we have. So, also, very similar, we were called neighborhoods. In the previous school, this school, they called them pods, but similar concept, where a large, open space, essentially a wing, if you will. And in this building, in this particular pod we're looking at right now, first grade was on the left side of the hall, second grade was on the right side of the hall. And so, it was a much, it was even a bigger wing than the previous school, because it was two grades down that area, with a big, wide-open space in the middle for intervention and various collaboration spaces. This building, you kind of see the sink there in the lower left, that's a strategically placed photograph, because this building had no sinks in any of the classrooms, other than the art room, art room. It was a, and the science room had it in there. They had it science as a specialist in this particular district. So, but they had a communal sink in the hallway, and then, they had, the bathrooms are accessible right, kind of right behind where that picture's standing. And so, they didn't have any concerns of not having sinks in classrooms. Interesting decision there for that. On the right-hand side of the upper right, you see kind of what a classroom looks like. Classrooms, themes of all four of these buildings were actually smaller than many of our classrooms. But I would say designed with a little bit more intentionality of student storage in their room, teacher storage in their room, and of course, that flexible seating throughout, that's a different conversation when it comes to furniture, and those sorts of things. Bottom is, of course, their, has a little bit of their special education area with their smart room for activities, and then, their kitchen set up there on the right-hand side. Again, similar, kind of an overlooking media center type model, where your second floor was overlooking the media center there. And one thing that I noticed in this particular building was a good example of it, but they all had something like this, very purposely-designed, flexible learning spaces. So, rather than a teacher or a staff member working in the hallway on a chair with a student just outside their classroom, there was a specific space designed to be able to work with kids when they need to be outside of their classroom, or a small group of kids need to go work on a project or something. Some intentionality to the design of the space. So, then, we went to Hugo, and we have to probably pause that if that guy starts talking. Maybe we're in good shape, he doesn't. Okay, good. Go to the next one. Yep, there it is. Okay, all right. So, no, no, I don't, you don't need to watch it. I just, for whatever reason, it's autoplay for that particular embedding. So, at, the takeaway from this building, you see much of the same of the others. But one of the things that I noted in all four of these buildings is, when you walked into the building, the one side, kind of the, the one end of the building, if you will, was kind of what they called the community end of the building. So, your gym, your cafeteria, a music space, in some cases, media center, was one, kind of one end of the building, very similar to the, close to the entrance. And then, there was a secure entrance or an entryway. You kind of see where it says "Learning Commons" there, under the green sign there in the upper left. You had to walk through there, and through there, then, is basically your academic wing. And so, for evenings, that's closed down, and your community part of the building is used. It also helped for school-age care, because then, all the school-age care was happening in these places, these community buildings, and it wasn't leaking over into classrooms at all, which kind of helped some of the territorialism with classroom space that ran into with school-age care, because it's hard, people don't want their spaces disrupted when they're not there. That makes sense. Working through with that. They went, it's hard to see here, but this particular, the servery, I mean, that's obviously a fancy TV monitor, everything there. But the point there is that they really did design that student entry and exit to the serving line very intentionally, so they move hundreds of kids through there relatively quickly. Pretty smart thing to do in that regard. Okay. Same concept, different school, learning studios, same thing as pods, same thing as neighborhoods, but it's a big, open area where classrooms all surround it, and students are working together. This particular building had the common prep area, so teachers did not have workstations in the rooms. They just had kind of that teacher planning center-type concept, that common prep area. And then, teachers would use, there was seven classrooms in that area, I believe if I remember correctly. And after collaborating together as a team, they would decide, okay, I'm going to use this room today, you're going to use that room today. We're going to move things around, based on pretty collaborative environment, but flexible space in terms of how they used it. And in this particular case, this was a fourth and fifth grade learning studio we were looking at here. And in that age, we don't necessarily want the students' stuff in the classrooms because of the stink and the dirtiness that comes along with students as they enter into their early adolescence. And so, they had the mudroom concept where things kind of, this was right next to the door that went outside, to their busing and the cafeteria, and the playground and such, with that sort of model. So, it didn't take away from the hallway flexible space in the learning studio, but it was a specific, it probably took the place of where a classroom would be. So, there's some use of space decisions to be made there for that. And then, we went to Northfield on the way back, Greenville Park. Interesting layout there in Northfield. This is located right next to the old school, and the old school still stands, and they use it for like community ed-type things. But this one, I thought it was interesting, I looked at the land dynamic. There's two schools next to each other, and I think I'm going to that one, that kind of thing. And that one's obviously a newer school. This one, I would say, was probably the most, I don't mean this in anything other than just a observation, more of a traditional-type layout. It wasn't quite as open as their buildings were, because all the buildings show the personality of their districts and how they want to do it. And this is more of a, looked more like an elementary school, as some of us might recognize it. So, cafeteria, gym, media center, very similar. You walk in the building, there's the media center, there's the gym, there's the cafeteria, all on one end of the building. So, that's a theme. And really, when you think about it, Wes is actually already pretty much designed that way. You go into the building, the music rooms are to the left, the gyms are there, you've got the big common area with your cafeteria, gymnastics space. And then, you've got to go through the double doors to get to the academic wing, if you will. So, Wes is kind of already, particularly if you had set the main entrance on the other side of the office, the airside of the doors to the north there at Wes, that would be exactly kind of what this looked like in a lot of models for that. So, very good. Pods, again, same comment. These probably had the narrowest pods, and you'll notice in this school, was something that we talked about as a, as kind of a preference for some members of the group, the windows, the big, wide windows, but not the floor-to-ceiling glass, still provided a lot of space and a lot of natural light and such. Purposely designing of space was a big theme we saw. So, the art room, for example, having a big art sink in there, having electrical outlets in there. The music room being set up with two entrances, so kids can come in and come out without having to get congested during transition time. And you see there in the far-right kind of center, there's more, another kind of mudroom locker area type situation for, in this case, it was the same thing where the older kids, fourth, fifth graders, had those in their pods. All four buildings were two floors, I think I mentioned that already before. But this one was a little bit different, because the pods were quite narrow, where you wouldn't really be able to get the whole grade level sitting in there for anything together. But it works for them for what they need to do. So, some things we talked about with the principals when we were out there, really intentional with designing where drop-off and pickup would be in the outside line of the buildings. None of them had a single drop-off or a single entry point for all the kids. They all had various locations throughout the building where kids came in and out based on drop-off or busing to keep that congestion down. Hallways designed very intentionally. Your specialist area, wherever you're, you're going to have lots of congestion around your specialist area, big, wide hallways there, not having, you know, your art room right in the middle of a line of first-grade classrooms. And so, those classrooms get disrupted a lot by the transitions that are happening all the time there. So, some things that way. Storage of space, winter gear, those are things we heard about. We heard about single level and two floors for some bases. Stairs and elevators are an issue. It's for some staff and students, but you have, so you have to make those accessible if you go that direction. But ultimately, I think what I've heard from all four principals was that it shrunk up their footprint to have it at two stories for the academic wing. And it made your transition time a little bit shorter, because you weren't going quite as far to get to wherever your common areas were. Restroom and sink strategically placed, that's one concern, particularly with our intermediate school right now. I do think that that, where the bathrooms are at the intermediate school, you're down in a sixth-grade classroom, you've got to come, you know, clear across the building to get to those one set of communal things. And so, it's just a matter of being purposeful when you design those things. And then, of course, we talked a little bit about the glass, why you would or would not want a lot of glass on the walls. Visibility is a positive thing, nine times out of 10, but there's also distractibility, there's also security issues, and also other things that come along with that that comes part of the design. So, at the end of this all, we kind of came to the themes of, here's some of the things that we took out of this visit that we know we either want to continue doing, because we have some of these already. And if we were to modify any of our space, whether, in whatever strategy we chose, these were some of the things we want to make sure we tried to prioritize. Having a secure entrance. And in the wings, pods, neighborhood model seemed to be a theme that seemed to be beneficial to student learning. Natural light, having an opportunity for the hallways and the rooms to feel brighter, having strategic entrances and exits, grade levels being together in community pieces, having specialists maybe somewhere away from your instructional area to reduce your traffic around your general classroom, classrooms. So, not in fourth grade and having constant parade of kids coming in out of the art room next to you. Having flexible space, a central media center, and then, common areas for collaboration and support. So, having spots, so that flexible spaces could be used for your EL, for your special education intervention teachers, and not feel like they're just isolated in a row of desks down the hallway with that. So, with some of these things in mind, we talked pretty significantly this afternoon as a Facility Committee, not trying to get too far ahead of ourselves on what do we want to do, move forward, yes or no, but more about the, I think we're in consensus that if we possibly could, these were the things we'd like to see in all of our facilities. You know, we have a lot of natural light in our high school. We have a really pretty open space in the Wes building. You know, we've got some things going for us that we can work through. So, whatever choices we make going forward, we want to try to incorporate some of these things into the plan. So, at the end of that conversation, one of the things we landed on was, with some of these things in mind, the teaching and learning aspect of it, let's take some time, and this would be the work that I'll do with our team internally, really do some additional work to incorporate these into the ideas and plans we already have, to bring to the board in the next couple of months, probably six to eight weeks, hopefully, to say, here's an idea, here's how it'll look like. And then, we can, as a board, talk through that decision of, does that mean we do anything with this? Does it mean we don't right now? What's going on in the community? We know there's lots of things going on in the community that don't necessarily positively influence what we need to do economically. And so, I think we need to just take all that in, let some of that process in our community a little bit as well. But we also know that we have to be realistic with what our community can do, and where we are with what's happening. But we also know we have some needs we have to address as well. And so, what I will do, and of course, I'd open it for discussion now at this point from either the committee or anybody else, but I will take that direction and walk away and try to get something even more affirmed up based on this, to be able to bring something back to the board in the next, probably six to eight weeks, to be able to really have that, probably the more difficult conversation of, do we move forward with anything, or do we just not right now? Because that's something we need to consider. But as the committee shared with me, and I think with good reason, we're relatively early. We spent so much time talking about the physical needs and the repairs, that now, we're getting into this part. And I need to give you all more information about what this means to what that would look like in a building, to be able to move forward. But that won't take very long, just need to do that. So, other thoughts from the committee? Anything I missed from our conversation that's relevant, or any other thoughts from anybody else? It was nice to see what our districts do, to get some ideas. I think those were things that we probably could have identified. I think those were things that we probably could have identified just without having to go see it. We kind of knew that, it was nice to see it. Um, one thing we talked about as a committee is maybe going to see some older buildings around the area that have been maybe remodeled lately or are, or maybe haven't even been remodeled and still have some of these things. So we can kind of get a sense of what does it look like in Wasika versus a White Bear Lake, you know, that kind of thing. Progress in, in just filling our bucket with the information we need to be able to move forward with some decision one way or the other.
Yeah, I, I think your plan is, is good. I mean, let's, yeah, let's put some of this into what a potential building remodel or whatever, what it would look like. Cause one of our challenges here, we don't have any, we don't have, we don't have a K five facility. And I'm sure all the buildings you went to were K five.
They all were K five.
Right. So it's, it's, so it's, it's different whatever, whatever we do. So it's, um, yeah, I'd be curious to see what, um, how all these themes could, could work for us.
So why K five? What's, 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 what's special about having a K five building?
Well, nothing is special having a K five building other than, um, for this, for this particular visit, if we were to do the addition onto WIS, we'd be looking at having a K six building. So we wanted to look at buildings that were close to that so that we can kind of get a sense of how does a building of 800 kids look? Cause that's what our building potentially would look like, 750, 800 students. How would that function? So that was part of it. What many districts look at is K five is together because they go with a six through eight middle school and a nine through 12 high school. And we don't have that, we have a seven, 12 junior, senior high, which, um, this, unless we use something more significant, we're not looking at changing to a K, to a middle school model just yet. So we're looking at leaving that seven, 12 at this point. That's why. We, it probably was, it would have been December of 2020, January of 2021. We looked at multiple research studies on what grade level pairings and buildings go well together. And what we found was there really isn't a best. It's about how you support each programming within the building. Anytime a kid makes a transition to a new building, you usually see a drop in performance on that first year in a new building. It's just whether that's sixth grade, fourth grade, whatever it might be. So you just add your resources there and do that, but it doesn't really matter if it's K five, K six, seven, 12. Anytime you make a transition, there's a learning curve for kids.
Did the committee discuss about, so if, if, if we're talking about adding grade level or grades over at the intermediate site? I mean, obviously that, that building is set up closer to the, a pod model. I mean, it's, 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 I could see it being there, but obviously that it's not set up that way. I mean, we're not, we're not discussing about having some of these things in a new addition and then just ignore WIS. I mean, you would want the whole building to benefit from some of these things, right?
We didn't specifically talk about it today.
Okay.
But yes, I think that's what I need to show the board so you have the insight of what that could look like.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. I, I think a significant, a significant piece that I, we, we keep working on, but we keep spinning on a little bit is what could the traffic pattern look like at that site? Which I, I heard loud and clear today, we got to get some answers to that before we can move too much forward on any other ideas. So that's something I'll work on.
Any other questions on this topic then? Well, thank you to the facility committee for your time and, um, yeah, your time doing this, so.
Yeah, I, I feel like we're very close to having the information we need to be able to say, now's a good time or now's not. And that's, I think, what I, we're, as a committee, we kind of came to the conclusion that we need to make that decision probably in the next, you know, a couple of months. So that we don't keep our, our community wondering what we're doing and continuing to spin. Just if we're not going to do it right now, we're not going to do it right now. And if we are, we are. That's, so that's why I'm hoping to give the board that last piece of information so we can talk that through here in the next couple of months.
Great. Thank you. All right, well then move on to our last topic tonight, which is just a legislative update, um, which the legislature is really busy right now, so.
There's lots going on right now. Yeah. And so essentially I wanted to talk through a handful of, of things that are happening right now, things that are on the table, things that are being proposed. Talk through what that means for Wasika and what that could mean for our, our planning in the next few months. So there continues to be some press pressing pressure from MRAA, which is the Rural Education Association and MSBA to have a 5% and 5% addition onto the formula and some inflationary linkage beyond that, beyond the biennium. Special education cross subsidy, 50% has been one proposal, it was governor's proposal. Several of our groups are also advocating for full funding of the special ed cross subsidy. With that, and just for reference for the dis, for, um, for the board, a 5% increase would be approximately $396 per pupil, uh, increase to our budget. So roughly 600, 600-ish thousand dollars for us, um, based on our average daily membership. Remember that's not per pupil, that's not the number of bodies we have. But there, um, our high school kids count as 1.2, our kindergarten kids count a little bit less. If you go to PSEO, we lose that attendance, that kind of thing. So figure that part out. The special ed cross subsidy for us has been anywhere between 1.6 and 1.8 million the last three years. And what that is, is, is dollars that we're taking from our general fund and using it to subsidize our, our special education services for the students that need that. So filling of that or reducing that gap would be significant impact to Wasika. Given our enrollment and the enrollment that we've had the last few years, special education cross subsidy is probably potentially more impactful to Wasika than, than 7% on the student formula. Because if you recall from the last biennium, was it even last spring? I don't recall what that was, when we, you know, we heard all about the historic increase to investment in education. But because our enrollment had gone down, we actually only had like a hundred thousand more dollars. It wasn't really all that impactful to us and our overall $30 million budget. Because the enrollment numbers didn't make up for the increase in student, student count. So that's some things that are being talked about right now. And some positive things. I mean, 25% of closing of the English language learner subsidy. So right now we are spending some money out of our general fund to subsidize the English language program that we don't, we don't fully have supported through state aid. That's being estimated about $14 per pupil of what that extra additional money could be with that. But then, and then the last one that's relatively important, and it's important to our community and our board, is they're looking at, there's two pieces. One is to increase our local optional revenue, uh, what your board approved can be for the levy, which currently is, is at $724, I think, uh, per pupil. They're looking at increasing that to $840 per pupil that a district could just choose to levy up to that amount without needing to go out for a vote. About $116 per pupil is what that could come out to, to benefit us. They're also looking at increasing equalization aid, which means that, we talked about that levy and we have a smaller tax base than some of our larger communities in, in the state. And so an X percent increase to our funds impacts our community different than it would a community with a larger tax base. So there's, they're looking at increasing the amount of equalization aid that a district would get as a smaller size like ours. It, they're not saying that's going to be particularly impactful to our bottom line, but it would be helpful at least for even up the playing field a little bit with some of our, our larger, our larger partners. Couple of things then that are, so those are kind of the new revenue sources. And that sounds like a lot of money and it is a lot of money. What the other piece that are handing, happening right now that are more concerning for me, and I think for districts in general, is some of the new mandates and policy ideas that are out there are going to be, um, far more impactful financially than I think is, is at first recognizable. So for example, um, paid family medical leave, uh, that is out there, which is a, which is a good thing. It's, it's a positive thing. Uh, I think when you think about how, how that could, um, impact families, be able to take more time to be with where they need to be. But they're think, they're expecting that could be a cost and I'm, you're taking MRAA information here. Taking that could cost about $50, $6, I'm sorry, $50, $30 per pupil, uh, potentially in dollars. We'll have to hold back to be able to just be prepared in case we have to pay somebody for that leave. So that's going to impact our negotiations considerably because we won't be able to offer that money to our employees. We'll have to hold it back just in case someone chooses to take leave next year. And so that's, that impacts our labor, our labor relations somewhat. They're looking at increasing para and other non-licensed staff members to $25 an hour minimum, which is, which is a significant impact to our, when you think about those positions, that may earn somewhere from $15 to $20 an hour right now, going to $25 an hour. That could be a significant impact to our budget with that piece too. And it, in my opinion, it infringes on our managerial rights of things that we negotiate with our, with our employees. I also see that that leads to a next consequence of when you start having gaps between employees who have different jobs and those gaps start to close based on wages, then the, the folks who are earning more dollars would like to see that gap stay the same. So it gets a more challenging conversation from a labor relation standpoint. A significant cost to us would be they're discussing mandatory health insurance contributions at a rate of 83% of single premium and 72% of family for all staff that work over 20 hours a week in your district. And so for us, just if we look at the teacher contract alone, that would be about $230,000 additionally per year that we would be, we would be supporting our, um, our insurance rates with that, which would impact our negotiations process. Last negotiation round for, for, um, teachers. It was a little bit more than, just a little bit more than half of that was the annual increase. I'm sorry, a little more than double that was the annual increase that was part of their contract increase. And so you think about half the increase is gone right away before we even had a chance to negotiate anything. That's, um, that's a struggle. The paid family medical leave, oh yeah, here's what I was looking at here. It would be covered through a 0.7% payroll tax, which would be about $105,000 a year for us, um, based on our annual payroll. Again, come right off our negotiation bottom line, we have to cover it somewhere. So interesting mandate, some of these. Other piece that I think is concerning from a mandate perspective is, um, and, and I, I have, I have to be, I want to be conscious of the fact, I don't think any of these are, are not good things for people. People would benefit from these things, I get that. But I'm talking about from an operational standpoint of a school district. Giving our hourly school year workers access to unemployment is another bill that's currently being thrown around. And so our paras and our food service staff and some of those part-time during the school year workers would have access to unemployment during the summer. The state does have a, this particular bill does have a mechanism to pay for that. However, I worry about our labor opportunities then in the summertime if our staff members who usually work summer school are now receiving unemployment. And not that I don't think they're wonderful people and want to work with kids, but they might reevaluate if they wanted to work summer school on that schedule or not, which puts us in a challenging position. Ultimately, the five and five, the 50% cross subsidy, um, local optional revenue and EL things, all those combine up. They, they just barely cover the extra, extra costs of the mandates that potentially could go with that. And so really we end up in a very similar spot to where we are right now. Now, I know they're working hard in St. Paul and a lot of our, um, our lobbyists and a lot of the district representatives are talking with our legislators, they're seeing some of these things. And some of these things are not necessarily even educational pieces. I mean, talk about the, the insurance and the unemployment and the, um, paid family medical leave. All employers are going to be working through those things. Um, and so it's not just specific to us. Our job is just to obviously figure out how it impacts us with that. Uh, the last piece that I would just say that's an interesting and somewhat concerning, um, um, trend right now is a lot of additional course mandates, uh, to increase the graduate, to change the graduation requirements to include additional courses. And I'm trying to think of, oh yeah. So here, these are the ones that are currently on the, have been proposed. An ethnic studies class, teachers of color and American Indian studies ethnic class, climate justice, civics in 11th and 12th grade, personal finance, service learning, comprehensive sex ed and affirmative consent instruction. Those are all bills that are currently out there for classes that could be offered or required to be offered in, in high school. And so I wonder about if we need a fifth year of high school to get some of these in. But ultimately, it, it, if, if this were the case, it would reduce the amount of flexibility and options our kids have to take electives, um, if that's the option. I don't, I, several of these have been on the, on the agenda for several years. So I don't know that any of them are going to come to be. But, um, it's something that we're, I, we're, I'm very, very aware of and we're communicating with, with our legislators as loudly as we can. We don't need any more mandates for what kids take in high school. I'd be happy to offer many of these classes, not all of them, but many of them. And if kids choose to take them, they work with their parents and they want to take a personal finance class, that sounds fantastic. But, or climate justice or pick your example, right? But as a requirement, I have significant concerns about that because our other electives then get, get squeezed out for kids. So many of these have not, I say them to you not to get everybody worked up because, but those are some of the things that are out there. March 10th is a really significant date because that's the first deadline that all bills have to be acted on favorably in their committee to move forward. And some of these, um, particularly the mandate pieces, haven't even received a committee hearing yet. And then they've only got about a week to go for that. So some of these might just die at the table at the end of next week. And so one of the things I'm looking at very carefully is at the end of next week, I will be looking at what truly is still on the table. So then I can get with the legislative committee and we can schedule a time to go to St. Paul and we can visit with our representatives, talk about how that's what impact, um, impact Wasika. I think that, um, some of the funding opportunities that are there are, are positive. I think special ed cross subsidy is fantastic. Anytime you can increase, uh, the per pupil formula, districts and students benefit, that, that's all really, really well and good. But we continue to, to voice the concern of local control. We, we have elected school boards who make decisions about what our students need in Wasika. And, um, we also have managerial rights and negotiated labor contracts. Much of what's actually more, almost more, almost all of them, if not all of them, except the courses of these mandates are actually infringing on what we've negotiated with our employees and their labor contracts. And so it becomes a situation of do we have anything to negotiate at all? And that's not, um, that's not helpful. We have good, we have a great relationship with our, our staff, our labor relations are positive here in Wasika. We've built contracts and labor agreements that fit for what we need here in Wasika. And we always want to get better, of course we do. But, um, I don't think it makes sense for the state to be able to tell us this is what your insurance contribution has to be because everyone's starting at a different spot. And so for our, one third of our employees who don't take insurance, that's going to significantly hinder the amount of salary increase I can do on the next negotiation round. And so they're going to see no benefit from that. And I don't think that's appropriate. I think that's ours, our, that's our animal to work through, if you will. So I think there's some good work being done. I do think that the, and, and I say this respectfully, there's a lot being thrown around right now because I think, because of the DFL control, there is an opportunity to try to get everything they possibly can think of out on the table. I think many of these will then come to, come to a dead end when committee time comes at the end of next week. But we're watching them, that's our job. Elizabeth and I are in that connection almost every day on some of these with our organizations that support us. And, um, we wanted to provide a little bit more detailed review for you tonight. Not, again, not to make anybody overly nervous because there's a long way to go between now and May 22nd. But I think we have to be planning for, um, what could be down the pike. You know, one of the things that I, I had a conversation with superintendent this morning, we were talking about right sizing budgets. And the comment was like, I'm not going to go all the way because I know we're going to get some additional funding. I'm not going to really balance our budget because I know we'll get some additional funding. And I just said, well, I respectfully disagree with that. We're going to have, we need to balance our budget because, and then if we end up having some additional funding, then fantastic, that's great. But ultimately we need to right size and live within our means of where we are, which is what we're going to, which what our process we're doing this spring. So that was a lot. And I don't mean that to be overwhelming, but it's just kind of a little bit of, that's the flurry that's going on right now. Um, and as a board, um, I want you to be as confident, as comfortable as you can that we're aware of it and we're, we're planning for these things. And we will bring to you, um, any impacts that actually come out of this as things get closer to the end. And legislative committee and I will be connecting towards the end of next week to schedule our, our session up, up to the Capitol because. because then we'll know what actually is still on the, there's not, not really a point to do it yet because I don't want to go up there and spend time talking about something that's not even going to get out of committee. So. Questions? There's a lot.
My concern when they start talking about fully funded, how are you going to, how are you going to measure it? How are you going to measure what fully funded is and what's going to be the outcome of fully funded? How are we going to know when we're, when we're fully funded? Are, are we going to, all we end up doing is, is putting a lot more money and nothing changes. What's going to change? That's, that's my biggest concern when they start talking fully funded. That, that whole terminology, I, I, I'm not, I'm not real comfortable with that type of terminology at all. I mean, like your percentage, you know, you, well, that's, you know, a percentage increase in the formula, fine, you know? Then we can work with that, you know? And, uh, and the fully funded thing, I don't, I'm, I'm not comfortable at all with that because of that. How do you measure it and what's going to change?
And you'll notice that none of the professional organizations, MSBA, MREA, MAS, uh, none of them use the term fully funded. They all use a percentage or an increase, what we've got going, so we can plan with that. That's a very, I hope, I don't want to cross the line too much, but that's a very political term, fully funded.
I know our governor uses the term fully funded all the time.
And that's a reassurance, right, that we should be able to get everything we're done. Well, they, but their side of that is fully funded to what? You just added a lot of mandates to me too. And so it's that, that kind of piece there for that. So for us, I think we are, and I don't mean this to be, again, I don't mean this to be dismissive, but we have school every day and so we're fully funded. I would like to be better funded for specific things. Right, that kind of thing, right? So that's.
That's a whole different conversation.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Last week I listened to the, um, the weekly chat, the legislative update and they, um, they included, um, a really, a good explanation of what school equalization means and how that can impact like our community and other communities. Um, and so I didn't send it to anyone yet, but I will send that out too because I found it, I mean, I get it, but I, I found that really helpful. And it was just really a one-page document that they did a nice job explaining that. But the, the increasing of, of school equalization will impact our community very positively because it's less on your property tax owners and more from the state. So, which we all contribute to the state, but, um, it's, it's less of a, of a local, or it's, reduces the local impact, so.
Yes.
But yeah, so I'll, I'll forward that to everyone and so you can read it or not, so.
Elizabeth, anything else from, from the Capitol that Masbo has been talking about or that you're seeing?
I honestly have covered every topic that we've been discussing and like other organizations. We have our, our regular meetings on just where things are at. Um, we get, uh, multiple notifications of, you know, now would be a really great time to just share your voice, what are your thoughts? Um, and it's really just sharing a perspective to hopefully give another lens to our legislature on just how would that directly impact us? And we try to take advantage of those opportunities whenever we can.
Any other comments or questions about what's going on legislatively? All right, thank you. Um, well, that is, uh, the end of our topics we plan to talk about for our workshop tonight. Our next meeting is Thursday, March 16th, is that the right date?
That's correct.
Okay. For some reason it's not.
Regular meeting, yep.
Yes, a regular meeting. Anyone watching at home, please feel free to reach out to anyone, uh, at the board tonight if you have questions. Otherwise, um, we will see you all March 16th, so.